Welcome to the March Meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight’s meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our January meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any corrections or amendments to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous Colleen Jenkins, Chair of District 6.
Whereas Isabel S. Cox was a representative of RTM District 6 in Old Greenwich for over a decade, and whereas Isabel Cox was a community leader and volunteer who gave of her time, talents, and resources to such institutions as Child Care 2000, which is an affordable childcare program for working parents in need, as well as to the Latchkey Scholarship Fund, the Greenwich High School Scholarship Foundation, Rainbow Kids, Salvation Army, and the Lion’s Low Vision Center of Greenwich, whereas Isabel’s philosophy and philanthropy remains an inspiration to this legislative body with such quotes as, “If you open it, close it. If you can’t fix it, call in someone who can. If you value it, take care of it. If you make a mess, clean it up. If you don’t know how to operate it, then leave it alone. Mind the pennies, and the dollars will take care of themselves. There is no limit to how much good you can do if you don’t care who gets the credit. Start each day with a smile on your face and let the sun shine through you.” Now therefore be it resolved that it is the sense of this meeting that we publicly express our appreciation for the work and words of Isabel Cox, and that these sentiments are permanently recorded in the minutes of the RTM. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in honor of the memory Thank you. Mary Ferry, Chair of District 5.
Good evening. District 5 asks that you join us in remembering the life of Benjamin Wisner Bacon, who died on February 6. Ben was born in New York City, graduated from Yale University, and served as Lieutenant Junior Grade in the United States Navy. He served in the U.S. State Department’s Vice Consul in the former Belgian Congo, returning to live in Riverside in 1959. In the 1960s, Ben was an Assistant Treasurer for SO International, and later became First Vice President for the French bank Credit Leonie. As a volunteer, Ben was very active in town affairs. He was a member of the RTM in the 1960s and again from 1998 through 2003. From 1972 through 1977, Ben was a member of the BET. He volunteered at Hill House and Nathaniel Witherell, was a member of the Retired Men’s Association, and taught in local continuing education programs. As a longtime member of the Democratic Town Committee, he was actively involved in many campaigns. After retiring in 1996, Ben wrote a book, Seniors of War, about the effect of technological advances such as the railroad on the Civil War. He also returned to acting and appeared in many local productions. Ben had a love of life and a willingness to be involved with his community that will be missed by all of us, including his wife, his three sons, and eight grandchildren. Mr. Moderator, we ask that the RTM observe a moment of silence in memory of Ben Bacon and that the minutes so record.
Thank you. Will everyone please rise and observe a moment of silence in memory of Ben Bacon? Randall Huffman, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the RTM, guests. Talking to you tonight for a minute about the CIP process. The BOC has examined the CIP process that has been developed by the Selectments Office. We met with Mr. Lash and Mr. Gomo, and we have concluded that the proposed CIP plan is a clear improvement over past practices and does increase the transparency of projects being considered, evaluated, and approved for financing. It should also be noted, however, that the CIP process that has developed and the 10-year plan that is now before you, or will be soon, is designed to make a huge capital investment in the town over the next 10 years. It will require holding our operating budgets to small increases for many years. It will require tax increases annually, probably at least 3.5 percent, as is indicated in the recommended budget for this year. That will roughly double our taxes over the next 10 years. Of course, our taxes have doubled over the last 10 years as well. It’s premised on making expenditures in the early years far in excess of the revenues that will be available for those expenditures. The shortfall will come from reserves on hand that will be essentially borrowed or advanced against, and the issuance of debt. What’s contemplated is issuance of short-term debt. In addition, the plan contemplates the creation of additional funds and transfers between funds over a period of years. As the BOC has looked at these issues, and as we have had conversations with others in town, both public officials and those interested in the budget, we have come up with a few things that we think should be included in the decision process for approving the CIP process. And we think it should be noted that while this budget will approve simply as usual a one-year financing plan for the most part for the town, approval of this budget will embark us upon the 10-year plan, and once we are started with that process, it should be expected that that plan will continue with indeed modifications and increases, but without a substantial reversal, of course, in the likely future. So what we think we should see is first of all confirmation from the town attorney’s office that the plan conforms with state statutes and the town charter, or any necessary revisions are put forth. We should see a revised cash flow and borrowing requirement statement. For this, I make note of the contributions and the questions raised by Bob Brady over the last few days and the work that he is doing with town officials on that score. I think we should also see a way to add to the process for vetting proposed projects, more participation and more openness, so that people can add their skepticism to particular projects before they are so committed that we are into the expenditures. And I think we also need to look to ways to better control escalating project costs. As we’ve seen in case after case, the initial cost that has been proposed for a project winds up being an unfortunately small percentage of the total final cost. That will have an additional major impact on the total cost of the CIP 10-year plan. One concern we have is how this process will make funding projects too easy, because when borrowing gets started, it seems as though the funds are there, they are available, and projects ought to be approved. There are many good projects that are listed in the 10-year plan, but I think we need to be ever vigilant that the concept that monies will be raised and monies will be there and borrowed when needed should not lead us to too easy a decision about funding future projects. We are also concerned, at the same time, that today’s taxpayers and those in the next few years are being asked to fund projects, in many cases with a long useful life, going out 10, 20, maybe even 30 years. And I think it’s appropriate that we look at circumstances in which some of those projects, if they are to be funded with debt, should be looked at for long-term borrowing, so that the people who enjoy the project are the people who pay for the cost. And remember that even where you’ve used borrowing to pay for a project, every dollar of project costs, plus all interest that’s payable on the borrowing, rather, will be paid by the taxpayers. Now a quick promotion. The BOC is meeting this Thursday night. We will be discussing further our analysis of the CIP process. In addition to that, we will be having a discussion with Joan Caldwell about labor contracts. We welcome any RTM members and members of the public who would like to join us, to come to the Mazza Room until we overfill it at 7:30 on Thursday evening. Thank you.
I was asked by Jim Riley, a member of District 9, just to alert everyone. He is handing something out. I think it’ll be on the back table when you leave. And another note, we only have five items tonight. I will not therefore designate any items for our consent calendar, nor recommend that any items be combined for voting purposes. We’ll take each item up separately. I have been alerted by Elizabeth Campbell of District 5 that she intends to offer a sense of the meeting resolution tonight. Hopefully, all districts have been notified of this relating to the deer cull issue. And I informed Ms. Campbell that because that is not on our agenda, the Freedom of Information Act requires that before we take anything up that is not on our agenda, we would need to vote by a two-thirds majority to take the item up, and if we then get a two-thirds majority, we would proceed to consider her sense of the meeting resolution. That will, however, come up at the end of our meeting, when we have completed the business on our agenda tonight. Which now brings us to the call for tonight’s meeting. Oh, I’m sorry. Before I get to that, Item 5, which is the proposed amendment to the planning and zoning regulations, I anticipate there are a number of interested speakers, and to try and organize the discussion on Item 5, there is a sign-up list up front and on the table as you enter the auditorium. So if you miss that and you are interested in speaking on Item 5, I encourage you to put your name on one of those two lists. All right. That brings us to the call for tonight’s meeting. Item 1 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? Elizabeth Link, our Fleet Director.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolved that the sum of $125,000 be and the same as hereby appropriated to be added to account number 380-53500, motor, fuels, and lubricants. Thank you. It is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 1 has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met this past Monday with 11 districts present and voting on this item. We had Betty Link to help us understand this. This item is requesting a supplemental appropriation for the current fiscal year to cover anticipated shortfalls in the fuels purchasing account. Ms. Link helped the Finance Committee understand the current shortage in both the gasoline and the diesel fuel accounts. There’s been a shift in the number of vehicles using gasoline over to diesel fuel, as well as heavy winters and other tolls requiring the trucks and vehicles using diesel to have a much higher usage than otherwise. She indicated that in the ’06 fiscal year budget coming up, that she has adjusted the projections to be more in line with current expectations, and we should hopefully see a more close alignment, at least on the volume side. Ms. Link also helped us understand that a significant difference that’s being addressed tonight is based on the pricing of the fuel and the per gallon cost, different from the actual cost being obtained. Most of it is well-covered in the explanatory explenos, so please refer to those. It is interim in that she needs the money now to finish the fiscal year. She’s running in a shortfall position, and so we do need to act on this with very little discussion. Our vote was 11 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining, with District 9 joining us right at the end of our vote.
Thank you. Mary Ferry, Vice Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Since we got snowed out on Tuesday night, Town Services met tonight at 7 o’clock with Betty Link. I have very little to add. Our vote was 7-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 1. Will the district chair -- I’m sorry?
Michael Puliot, District 12. I prepared a few comments in regards to this. On the surface, the issue before us today is a matter of authorizing funding. It is clear that the town has incurred an expense and is obligated to pay it. When town officials overreach the agreed-upon budget parameters, they must come to the RTM for final approval on how to resolve their transgression. And beyond all the huffing and puffing that the RTM members may do when they are annoyed by an apparent mistake by town officials, the only way that the RTM can hold town officials feet to the fire is to vote no. The question that arises from the issue at hand is, why did the town enter a variable-rate fuel contract? This seems to be an obvious question for a few reasons, the most important being that the town operates under a fixed budget. Thus, expenditures should be predictable. A variable contract is not predictable. A variable contract is a tool for speculators who are trying to predict market conditions. I suggest that the town should not be in the business of speculating any market conditions. But I’ve heard no reasonable answer to the question as to why it is sensible for the town to enter into variable-rate contracts. Furthermore, I’ve heard no plan as to how to prevent this type of overage in the future. This question needs to be answered satisfactorily. This body needs to be given a reasonable assurance that better safeguards are in place to prevent such an unexpected expense from occurring again. Until such time, it is the duty of this body to hold the town officials accountable and to vote no. Finally, concern has been expressed about the consequences of a no vote. The bill has to be paid, right? Well, it’s my understanding that the bill would be paid by taking funds from some other part of the budget. This may hardship in some other part of town government, and may even directly affect services to some town residents. And you know what? That’s the point. The way to make someone accountable is to impose consequences. And the RTM is only one effective way to impose consequences on town government, and that’s to vote no. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 1. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 1, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, we will continue with our agenda. Item 2 now comes before us. Our Police Chief, James Walters.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item 2, resolved that the Greenwich Police Department accept a monetary gift in the total amount of $8,000 to provide for the purchase of a replacement canine. $5,000 to be appropriated to account F213-53950, and for veterinary maintenance for retiring canine Shiloh, $3,000 appropriated to account F213-51420, as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 2 has been moved and seconded. Mary Ferry with the report of our Town Services Committee.
We had a discussion with Chief Walters about what happens to Shiloh. Shiloh will go to his current handler for a dollar when he is retired. The money for the veterinary expenses will be kept by the town and will be spent as required. The $5,000 purchase is a purchase for the dog and for some medical tests, as I understand it, and the training of the dog will be free through the state. We voted 10-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 2, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item 3 now comes before us. Dr. Susan Wallerstein of the Greenwich Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Item 3, resolved that the sum of $7,374 be and is hereby appropriated to be added to account Z6800-892-59560-24079 for Parkway School well-water improvement. Said appropriation to come from the Reserve for Capital Nonrecurring Fund, as printed in the agenda.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 3 has been moved and seconded. Bob Brady, Chair of our Education Committee.
The Education Committee met last Monday night with districts 1, 9, and 10 unrepresented. We voted 9-0-0 to recommend approval of this item. It basically completes the work at Parkway, which is April of last year, we’d appropriated $150,000 to bring the total project cost to $300,000, so it will now be $307,000 and change. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 3. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 3, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item Number 4 now comes before us. Ed Gomo, Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, Item Number 4, resolved that the sum of $2,181,850 be and is hereby appropriated from the Reserve Fund for Capital and Nonrecurring Expenditures to account Z301-59800-25116 for the acquisition of property at 180 Mason Street and costs associated with said acquisition.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 4 has been moved and seconded. We will have the reports of our committees, beginning with Mr. Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the town meeting and guests. The Land Use Committee met last Monday evening. The meeting was chaired by the Vice Chairman of the Committee, Elizabeth Galt-Hirsch, and the reports that I will read, that I will give this evening will be reports that were prepared by Elizabeth. Effective tonight, she is no longer a member of the Representative Town Meeting, having retired, and her replacement having been selected, and I think sworn in this evening. In any event, I want to give credit to her for these reports, and also publicly thank her for her long service, both to the Land Use Committee and to this body. She has been an extremely effective member of town meeting and an extremely valuable community resource. Here is her report on Item 4. The Land Use Committee met in joint session with the Finance Committee and the Legislative and Rules Committee to discuss this item. First electman, Jim Lash, was with us. Mr. Lash gave an overview of the police station project and its status. The project will take an estimated six years to complete, and the cost will be over $16 million. The police station will be 49,000 square feet. This is the second request for funding for this project, the first being $1 million appropriated two years ago for preliminary engineering and architectural designs. Mr. Lash had on hand the preliminary architectural renderings from the firm of Jetter, Cook, and Jackson showing the project as it will be completed. The purchase of 180 Mason Street is necessary for the first phase of the project. There were three appraisals for the property, ranging from a low of $1.4 million to just over $2 million. The BET has already voted in favor of the acquisition with no conditions. It is a straight cash deal. A title search has been done. The appropriation covers also incidental expenses, and these include various selling expenses, including the loss of lease reimbursement for Judy’s nails. After a full discussion, the Land Use Committee voted in favor of the item, 10 in favor, none opposed, with two abstentions. District 1 abstained because of lack of clarity about the need for the project and the changes it will bring to the town. District 2 abstained because the delegate felt that he did not have enough information to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Josh Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met this last Monday with all 12 districts present and voting at this item. As Mr. Blumer has reported, our discussions and information to share is very much in line with what he’s already done, so I won’t draw this out, except there was a breakdown of the $2.1 plus or minus million, which included $152,000 to demolish the site, to take out the asbestos that’s in the building, and to remediate the oil well, the oil tank that’s in the ground, and the $44,000, as Mr. Blumer indicated, for the taking care of some incidental expenses of the seller. This item is before us because it’s kind of a timely opportunity to acquire this piece of property. It’s essential for squaring out the facility, and so that’s why we should and appropriately are acting on it tonight. Our vote on this item was 12-0-0, all in favor of this item. During our discussions, the Finance Committee had a motion of the committee to ask the Chair to bring forward the concerns regarding the projected amount to build the new public safety complex, which is now over $60 million. We are in discussions with the BET regarding their consideration to place a condition on the use of the budget item in the ’06 budget that locks in kind of a pathway to demolish the existing police administration building and do some other work. This project has mushroomed from $24 million a couple of years ago to 40, and now is over 60, and wanting to get some more definitive answers on project cost, construction cost, et cetera. And so that’s what we’re looking for. And so that's what we are in the process of doing. That is our report, 12-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Jim Campbell, Secretary of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Our Chairman Doug Wells could not be here tonight, but he was chairing the meeting for us last Monday night when Legislative and Rules met, as you've heard also with the previous two committee reports. I have little to add, except for our vote, and that was 11-0-0 in favor. District one was absent.
Thank you. Mary Ferry with the Town Services Report.
Town Services met tonight with Mr. Gomo, Chief Walters, Chief Barzowa, and First Selectman Jim Lash. Our vote was 10-0-0.
Thank you.
Districts two and three absent.
Discussion on item four. Dr. Carlson, District one.
This is a good property for the town of Greenwich to own, but I don't think it's so good of an idea as the first step to spending $60 million for a police station and firehouse. I think there should be extensive public discussion over whether it's wise to go and spend $60 million for such structures before an initial vote such as this is taken. In District one, we had some discussion about this as a good purchase to make, and wouldn't it be better if it was made with parking fund money? So I would like to ask through the moderator, the town council, whether it would be legally possible to amend this to use parking fund money.
Mr. Wetmore.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the town meeting. It would not be in legal order to amend this item, to have these monies come out of the parking fund. As most of you are aware, the parking fund is restricted as to its usage. This particular project would not fall within the ambit of the Charter section. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item four. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number four, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on item number one, which was an interim appropriation of $125,000 regarding motor fuel. Those in favor, 137; opposed, 24; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. The vote on item two, which was the gift relating to the police canine, those in favor, 163; opposed, 2; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. That now brings us to item five. As I said, there are, there were signup sheets put out as you entered the auditorium and up front. If there is someone who could retrieve the list outside, I would greatly appreciate it. That now brings us to item five. Diane Fox, our Town Planner, has that resolution.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, thank you, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item number five, reasons follows. Resolved that the following amendment to Section 1 of the Special Act 469 of 1951 is amended, and Article 9, Section 82 of the Town Charter be adopted as follows. Definitions: small a, seven, subdivision. Revision, words in brackets to be deleted, words bolded to be added. Subdivision means the division of a tract or parcel of land into, delete, three, add, two, or more parcels or lots for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of sale or building development, expressly excluding development for agricultural purposes, and includes re-subdivision. Further resolved, that pursuant to the Special Act 469 of 1951 is amended, that the Town Code, Article 4, subdivisions, Section 6-26115 be amended as follows. Section 6-26115, definition, subdivision. Revision, words in brackets to be deleted, words in bold to be added. Subdivision shall mean the division of a tract or parcel of land into, delete, three, add, two, or more parcels or lots for the purpose, whether immediate or future, off-sale or building development, expressly excluding development for agricultural purposes, and includes re-subdivision. The item is, as is shown on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Again, I will read a report that was prepared by Elizabeth Hirsch. The Land Use Committee met in joint session with the Finance Committee to discuss the recommended change to eliminate the free cut in subdivisions from the Town Charter. Harry Levine, the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, presented the history of the first cut subdivision. The central problem is that many projects have escaped the review of the Commission under this rule. This has produced projects with many problems, including but not limited to drainage, flooding, undersized lots, and septic placement. With an already approved subdivision, the applicant can go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for hardship relief to build on non-conforming lots. By design and function, the Zoning Board of Appeals has a bias in favor of the right of the homeowner to build on an approved lot. Stanford took the step a number of years ago to eliminate the free cut. Harry Levine's presentation and the question and answers session that followed, in-depth presentations by Diane Fox, the Town Planner, and Katie Blakely, Assistant Town Planner. Ms. Blakely showed three examples of problems that have resulted from the inability of the Commission to review the first cut subdivision. After full discussion, the Land Use Committee voted 11 in favor, none opposed, with one abstention in favor of this item. The one abstention was the delegate from District two, due to the fact that he did not feel up to speed on the details of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Campbell, Secretary of the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. As you've heard, the Legislative and Rules Committee met together in joint session initially with Land Use for this item. I would only add to Mr. Blumer's comments that Mr. Levine expanded on what you've seen in our explanatory notes, that in 1958, the state of Connecticut amended its laws regarding subdivision to be three or more, and that in 1970, 12 years later, the town of Greenwich adopted the state definition. Mr. Levine did not give any explanation for the state's or town's actions at that time, but did emphasize the need for regulation, specifically that the so-called free cuts are maximizing housing size with a minimal, excuse me, a minimal regard for impact. And the Town Planner, Diane Fox, emphasized as well a perceived need to protect property rights and ensure proper development, and she cited especially drainage, soil erosion, and tree removal issues. And the specific examples that Mr. Blumer earlier referred to that were brought to our attention, I think all were examples of specific so-called free cuts that posed problems with regard to those issues. Legislative and Rules then met separately downstairs, and the town attorney, John Wetmore, addressed us and spoke to the issue of legal order. He assured the committee that there is no legal prohibition on the town deviating from state statute in this instance, as Greenwich is a special act community. The committee took two votes, first on legal order. The committee voted 11-0-0 approving, with District one absent, and then took a second vote on the merits, and their Legislative and Rules voted eight in favor, two against, one abstaining, with District one absent. District seven and 11 voted no. District two, our chairman, abstained. The dissenting votes and abstention, if I could summarize, I believe, were concerned over first, the lack of an explanation for the state's adoption in 1958 of the three-lot subdivision rule, or for the town's adoption some 12 years later of that same rule, and also questioned whether the proposed amendment was the preferred or necessary means to address the concerns that I think all shared behind this proposal.
Thank you. Before I get into discussion on this item, I'd like to report the votes on items three and four. Item three was the interim appropriation regarding the Parkway School well project. Those in favor, 159; opposed, 7; abstaining, 0. That item has carried. Item four, the appropriation of 2 million plus for the purchase of property on Mason Street. Those in favor, 137; opposed, 27; abstaining, 4. That item has carried. Back to item five, discussion on that item. Harry Levine, Chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. The explanatory notes have been distributed to all of you, I believe. I'm not going to repeat them. They speak for themselves, the history of this. I would like to immediately, however, comment on what was said prior to this, to my speaking, and that is, I made no comment as to why the state or this RTM back in 1970 adopted this. The answer is, no one knows. There is no legislative history in the record as to why it was adopted in Hartford. There is no legislative history in our record as to why it was adopted here. It's one of those rules that happened. I could speculate as to why it happened, but I have no facts, so I won't do that. The members of the Planning and Zoning Commission attended, I believe, all of the district meetings, attempted to respond to questions. And I'm going to, after discussing it among ourselves, it appears that some of these questions repeated themselves in various districts, and I'm going to try to respond to those questions specifically. The one comment made is that if this change is made, it will unfairly place a large burden of costs on property owners. At the present time, if you have a lot that qualifies for a free cut, you have to obtain a deed history, employ a lawyer. Because of its technical nature, I've never seen anybody not do it, do it without a lawyer. And you come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the issue is whether or not it is a subdivision or re-subdivision. If it is not, we have no jurisdiction, and that's the end of the matter. If there is, are variances to be obtained, you go to the ZBA. And that's how it works for all of these free cuts. If this rule is changed, what will occur is they'll have to follow the subdivision regulations, which means you'll have to prepare a subdivision plan, a layout. You'll have to employ architects or engineers to make drawings. It will be more expensive, somewhat. I think there are two answers to this. The first is, I think all communities have the right to require developers who wish to build in the community and utilize its infrastructure, to submit plans showing what they plan to do and how they plan to do it. We've been doing this in Greenwich for 70 years, more than 70 years. It's hardly a burden to ask developers to do this. It protects the town. It results in a public hearing. People can come and look at it. Neighbors can make their comments. What is not fair is for developers to say that free-cut lots are entitled to escape this obligation. The other comment is this. It's difficult to exactly quantify how much difference the cost would be if you had a free cut versus having to do the subdivision regulation procedure. But you're not talking about enormous amount of money. You're talking probably some thousands of dollars, and in all events, it is a minor fraction of the dwelling that's being created. The buildings that are resulting on these lots are going for half a million dollars and more. So I think the comment that places a burden is not appropriate. The comment was made also in several meetings that the proposal will reduce the value of the property involved. The intrinsic value of the property, if it is, if this rule is changed, will not, will not be affected. What may be affected is the value added under the present rule, which results in the fact you can escape the subdivision regulations. You don't have to employ an architect, make drawings, come before the Planning and Zoning Commission with your proposal. To the extent the marketplace adds value because of that ability to escape, I suggest that that is something this, this town should not support. They're not entitled to profit from the fact they've got a lot that escapes the regulations. A comment has been made that this proposal will trigger an avalanche of applications for free cuts. It probably, not an avalanche, I don't think it will trigger. In fact, it is now going on. People who have these lots are coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission office and asking to make their application, because they anticipate this change may occur. We have a Hobson's choice. We can do nothing and let this continue forever indefinitely, or we can make the change, absorb whatever changes we have, any free cuts we have to approve now, and then for the future, the town will be protected. A comment was made in several, in several district meetings that the real problem is the Zoning Board of Appeals, which has been too lenient in granting variances. And there's no point in making this change from, as proposed, because unless you can change the ZBA, it won't make any difference. I think this ignores how the process works. At the present time, an owner must obtain a deed history, get a lawyer, come to see us, get his free cut, and then go to the ZBA. What will happen is the subdivision regulations are quite detailed. They've been there for a long, long time. You've got to prepare a subdivision plan, a layout, and you've got to come and have a public hearing, and the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews it. It's a, it's a negotiation. Should the set aside be here or there? That sort of thing. Where is the driveway going to be? Neighbors participate. If it, in the rare, in the rare instance, and truly is rare, if the Planning and Zoning Commission turns it down, it is appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's the one thing that gets appealed from what we do, the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Town Charter says it's a hearing de novo. They, for a moment, become a little, or a secondary Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have to follow the same rules and questions that we have, but the question is not as whether it's a hardship. It's a big difference. So simply saying that we have to wait until the ZBA changes, which by the way is not going to happen, because they're an independent entity, I think this is the point that this change will compel those who have these kind of lots to do what everybody else does. Come for us, tell the public what you're going to do. People can look at it, and the town will be protected. Point has been made that there's no need for subdivision regulations, because approvals can be obtained from a building department, wetlands, why bother? The subdivision regulations require a developer to make a complete presentation to the town via the Planning and Zoning Commission for what they're going to do. Obtaining approvals from the building department, or say, an independent opinion from the wetlands, is not the same thing. The public hearing, for one thing, is avoided. And I've watched these many times, and they're exceedingly valuable, because nobody knows the local turf, the local property, like the people who live there. And they often give us very useful information about why something should be done or not be done. All zoning and subdivision regulations are based on some public policy. For example, setbacks. The idea is very simple. Have minimal distance between your, your house and the property line and your neighbor. Everybody's favorite, excuse me, everybody's favorite regulation, of course, is the, is the FAR, which, among other things, attempts to put a limit on megamatt mansions. The point is that this three-lot division, three-lot definition has no policy behind it, whatever. It simply happened. Why it happened, I don't know, as I said earlier. However, I'll hazard, I'll hazard one guess about its origin. Back in 1970, when this body approved this subdivision regulation with the three-lot definition... definition embodied in it, I don't think anybody at that time, when a house in Greenwich, average sales price was $87,000, and it was plenty of land for development, anybody at that time imagined a Greenwich where the sales price average is $2.5 million.
30 seconds.
So the change is enormous. This little anomaly, this little fluke, you might say, has changed from something that made no difference back in 1970, when you adopted, to an enormous incentive to developers to get these free cuts, take those plots, develop them to the maximum, avoid all set-asides. The town is being harmed. I urge you to support this.
Diane Fox, our town planner.
Thank you. Mr. Labine, our chairman, has described the processes that we go through now with the lot split free cut. I'd like to point out what the future holds for us. How did we get into this position, and where do we go from here? Number one, the reason why we have this lot split free cut, as they'd say, is because of a court case that happened in 1990, '91, here in Greenwich, where the issue prior to that time was the town planner could sign off on lot splits. At that time, there was a piece of property in Riverside, and the town planner signed off, as was the custom at the time. The neighbors appealed it, went to court, and the court ruled that the town planner did not have jurisdiction to sign off on lot splits. And the recommendation at that point was that it has to go to the commission. That started the process from that point on, approximately the end of '91, the beginning of 1992, of how we get these lot splits, free throws, as it were, at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. However, having said that, we do not, as Mr. Labine points out, have the right to make any kinds of comments, nor does the public have any right to suggest any kind of improvements to the property, for an example. So all the commission really does, and all the staff really does, is look at the legal history to say, this is not a piece of a property that was divided sometime in the past. And there's an expense associated with that, a legal fee. Number two, that's where we are today. We've had approximately 95 applications in the past five years, and a good number of those, actually, I think it was about 30%, ended up at the Board of Appeals.
Excuse me, Ms. Fox. Could I just ask that you leave the microphone, just not hold on to it?
Is that better?
Yes.
Can you still hear? Thanks. If you can't, just raise your hand. I would like to point out that one of the staff pieces of information that we pulled together before coming to you was how many of these lots are potentials in the future, because I think we have to look at that at this stage. And this issue cuts across all zones. It's not primarily in any one zone, just to give you an idea. And you have this in attachment number one, and I will just highlight that. Attachment number one says, summary by zone, the number of lots in each zone, we come up with a total of 15,000. And of that 15,000, 1,175 automatically have sufficient lot area to be split in half. In other words, they have double the lot size for the zone. And depending on the zone that you're looking at, for an example, the larger zone that has double the lot size is the R12. That impacts Old Greenwich, Riverside, and some of the mid-country. The next largest area is the R7 zone. And the next after that is the RA1 zone, RA2 zone. The least impacted with double the lot size is the R6 zone. The four-acre zone has 41 lots that could be coming in tomorrow to our office, having double the lot size, coming in for a lot split. So, as I said, 1,175 lots already have double the lot size that could walk in tomorrow. We also have the number of lots that have between the minimum lot size and double the lot size. Now, I know that there's been some issue that's been raised with regard to how much additional land. As we have seen with the applications before us, we've had applications that come to us with 7,800-square-foot lot that get split between a 4,000 and 3,800 square foot. We're not suggesting that everybody would do that, but on the other hand, we have a potential 8,446 lots out of the 15,000 that have a potential to walk in the door and ask for a lot split and go to the Board of Appeals for variances if they need it. Of the applications that we've had in the past on lot splits, I believe it's approximately 25% of them have had some variances. So the point being, it's not just what's happened in the past, it's really what is going to happen in the future. And if, out of the 15,000 total residential lots that we have in this town, that there is a potential, not only for 1,175 to walk in the door with adequate lot size, but an additional number, plus or minus 8,000 lots, to walk in the door and then go to the Board of Appeals for variance, we're really talking about almost doubling the number of lots in town. That's a significant issue. And let me tell you why that's significant. It isn't because we want to stop development. This opportunity to change the definition is not going to stop future development or subdivision. What we're trying to do is better manage the type of development that's occurring on the lots, to better protect the general public and not just an individual property owner. One of the big problems, as we have seen in our meetings, is that for every property lot split that comes in, there are at least three or four neighbors that are going to be immediately impacted, adjoining and across the street. Their property rights are not being taken into consideration at this point. They're the ones who come to us and say, but I'm getting the drainage, but they blast it, and now I have a problem with my driveway. I have examples here that I would be happy to show. I don't want to take up a lot of time. But we had one person come to us in District Eight on an application and showed us the results of this lot split, where her driveway was undermined, where the blasting caused water problems, where the water was actually running down the street into a sanitary storm system. And we have no control on that. Whether it's legal or illegal to put the water in the storm system, the point being that that sediment going into that storm drainage system is a price tag that each of us as residents have to bear if that system needs to be improved. Some of that ends up in the sewer plant. So part of this issue is equal treatment under the law, in a real sense. Somebody wants to subdivide their property, everyone else needs to be protected at the same time. The cost to the taxpayers for the infrastructure, our sewers, town trees are being removed because of site distances issue, where the driveways are being cut and the width of driveways, we have no control over that. We have no design review. We also have the question of the sheet flow, as I mentioned, where neighbors come to us and say, I'm getting the drainage, what can you do for me? And we have to say, there's nothing we can do. Under a subdivision regulation, we can review that issue, have onsite detention, and make sure that the neighbors are protected. And that's one of the issues that we're really trying to address with this two-lot subdivision. We have safety issues. Right now, when properties get divided in back, in many of the zones, particularly in the R6 zone, they have parking that backs right out into the road. You can see this on Millbank Avenue, you can see it in Pemberwick. And this is a safety issue. It's also more impervious coverage. We're ending up with properties that literally do not have green space, recreation areas in the area odds, but really are 90% coverage. And that's not the intent of the regulations, that's not the intent of the plan of development. So some of these things can be addressed under the two-lot subdivision. The other issue is the wells and septics in the back country. One of the issues that we run into, as people will say on these lot splits, is that technically speaking, there may be a problem with wells and drain down, as one would say, on the watersheds where wells are being drained at this time. People come to us and say, well, since that new lot went in, my well is not giving me the same gallons per minute. There's nothing we can ask about that at the time of the lot split. There's nothing we can ask about the septic issues. No one has to provide us with information to say that they've done the test borings for the septics or for the wells, and that people are protected on that basis. So we don't have that ability either. There has been a statement made that the building department takes care of these issues onsite. I will tell you that, having talked to Jim Maloney and Bill Marr, there is no protection. There is no onsite detention required at the time of a permit. After a lot split occurs, they march down to the building department, they file plans. Nobody asks a question about the drainage. The only time they need a question on the drainage to be addressed is before CO, a letter from an engineer has to be submitted to the engineering department, saying that there's no offsite impact of drainage. So at the time of construction, which is where most of the major problems occur, there is no requirement to handle onsite detention by the building department. There is no issue about looking at the site distance driveway at the time of building permit. That's a different department, that's a different permit, that comes at a different time. There's a lack of coordination. And I think under the two-lot subdivision, what you're going to find is that not only are the general interests of the public protected and the immediate neighbors, but these issues become more coordinated, and we have answers to questions when people raise those questions. The impacts on the adjoining neighbors and the opportunity for the public to make a comment is critical. The more properties that we have seen with these lot splits that have been divided and the issues that are raised...
30 seconds.
Thank you. Have created problems where our hands are tied and where the public at large are affected. We ask you for your consideration, and we urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Marchesi, to be followed by Christine Edwards.
Hello. My name is Paul Marchesi. I'm a commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission, have been for slightly less than a year. So I'm still getting used to the big target I'm wearing on my back. You're going to hear a lot of technical issues related to this, okay? And it can be quite confusing. The package alone is very thick. You get inundated with all kinds of things, like drainage and engineering issues and stuff. What I'd really like to do is cut to why this issue is so very, very important for the town. Harry, I'm going to quote you, because you didn't quote yourself. The other night in one of our meetings, you said something that was very, very nice. It was, if New York is the Big Apple, Greenwich is the Golden Apple. Okay? What's happened to Greenwich is land prices have gotten so high, and the profits from development have gotten so high that, in order to achieve those profits, everyone is out to maximize the square footage possible. Also, it is very, very much in a developer's interest to bypass the Planning and Zoning Commission, because we might ask them to do something that might cost them money. So what I want to do is I want to jump right into the fact that what's happened here is a little-known piece of the law has been discovered because of these pressures, and is now being turned into a very, very major loophole. And what's happening is the loophole is being used to supplant the normal process, it's being used to prevent proper review, it's being used to keep neighbors from bringing issues forward. It's a loophole that absolutely needs to be closed. And I'd like to just describe very quickly how the loophole is used. And I can use it in two instances. I'll use an instance in R6, which is the smallest condition, and one in R10. We have a condition in R10 right now where we have a lot which came before planning and zoning. We had a very, very nice subdivision worked out with the owners of the property and with the developers, whereby we had a nice set-aside that was adjacent to a beautiful meadow that was used by the neighbors. What happened was, they decided to, that more money could be made by not following that subdivision plan. So what they did was they came for two lot splits, divided the land into four lots, then moved the lot lines very creatively, so as to create double-sized lots, which were then, in turn, cut in half again. And we ended up with six houses instead of five, and no set-asides at all, and no preservation, and also no review of the wetlands and some very, very, very sensitive nature areas on that property. Second example, on the smaller zones in R6. Typical way a developer comes in is he buys a house in the R6 and buys the house next to that house. Then comes before planning and zoning with a lot split. There's nothing we can do about it, the lot gets split. So we've now gone from two nice houses, some of them with a lot of historic value, by the way, nice lawns, nice setbacks. Suddenly, we now have four lots. And because it's an R6 zone, R6 zone allows for two-family apartments, for two-family houses. We suddenly have eight condominium units on what used to be two nice, small lots with two nice houses. It completely bypasses Planning and Zoning Commission. I can tell you, I haven't been on less than a year. It's one of the most frustrating things I've ever had to do, is sit on the commission and night after night in these meetings, grant approval to these people because we have no control over this. This is a loophole which is causing serious overdevelopment in Greenwich, and it needs to be closed.
Mr. Clark, please state your point of information. Christine Edwards is the next speaker. Is she here? When I call the next speaker, I'd appreciate it if you'd come down and wait in the chairs at the front. Mr. Clark?
My question, sir, if we pass this tonight, will Diane Fox's nightmare of people coming in tomorrow be obviated? Does this legislation take effect immediately if we pass it?
Mr. Clark, I will put you on the list, and we'll get to that.
It's only a question.
I know. Christine Edwards?
Yeah.
To be followed...
Actually, there was somebody...
I'm sorry.
There was somebody who had signed up before me. I signed up second. I didn't hear that person's name called.
To be followed by Cheryl Dunson. Ms. Edwards.
Okay, so whoever it was whose place I'm taking, I'm sorry.
There are several lists here, and don't worry about the order.
Okay, thank you, because I thought we went by order, that's why we signed up. Thank you. It's very good to speak to you all tonight. Thank you, Mr. Robb, moderator, and all our members. I hear a lot of fear that's coming through from Diane, from Mr. Labine. And it reminds me of when we had, was it just last month, the deer, the deer, deer chicks, deer chicks, deer chicks, let's kill the deer. Now we're down to, we are having overdevelopment, overdevelopment, overdevelopment. And I'm hearing a lot of developers, but I'm speaking, as I did at the first Selectman's meeting, on behalf of the homeowners, particularly who are in the R6 zone, who in District Eight and in Pemberwick and Byram and such are part of this. I see that we are in fear of development, R6 zones are where we have development, that's supposed to be the most densely developed part of town, to allow for apartments, to allow for affordable housing in town, to allow people who have cobbled together lots over time, to be able to, if it was 50, 60 years ago, as one of my district members had the experience of a grandfather putting together lots, and what it did was to preserve that individual being able to stay in Greenwich. Many people do have to leave because they don't have a rentable apartment, for instance, if they're in a R6 zone which allows for it. As they age in place, they can have an apartment that will allow them to stay there, to have their costs covered, to be able to be part of the community in town. We do have a lot of developmental issues that, when you do build, have to go through. I've been waiting five months for driveway approval. It's not something that comes like that. It's a very long-studied application. Things don't happen as quickly as it sounds like. I have one friend of mine in District Eight who's been waiting over a year to get a building permit. These are not things that happen overnight. The issue of taking this as a free split, which has been mandated and available to us, and then putting this into a subdivision plan, in one case, a free split, just to give you some idea, cost one of my district members over $20,000. Is that a lot of money for people? This is not a free split, oh, it's only going to be 10 bucks to put a filing in, or just to write something up. That's a lot of money. You have to have topical surveys done, things are waited, you have to wait for the engineer to be able to be available. I had one engineering plan, took me over three months to move forward with that. So these are not things that happen overnight. They do take time. And I don't want to have everyone feel that they have to immediately run and make a choice and vote on this. I really think we need to have more time speaking personally to our district members, to the people that we represent. I really think that we need to postpone this and have a little bit more inquiry on it, and not just run. Because the most important issue that we have to look at beyond the issue of the lot split, beyond the zoning, beyond the development, is that we're making charter change. And charter change is a very, very serious business for us here in the RTM, and should not be taken lightly at all. I would think that to make a decision on this tonight would fly in the face of very, very serious inquiry about what charter change itself means, because I think we will be put up to more charter change in the future, and we should be extremely serious not to move quickly in charter change. Thank you.
Cheryl Dunson, to be followed by Franklin Blumer.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Dunson, and I'm the land use specialist for the League of Women Voters of Greenwich, and we appreciate the opportunity to address the RTM in support of... of Item Five, the proposed subdivision regulation amendment. We reviewed this proposal, taking into consideration the League's positions, which includes support for the coordination of land use actions among all branches of town government, updating land use measures in light of current development pressures, and the strengthening of town policies to achieve land use goals, and finally, timely and expanded opportunities for public input in land use decisions. The League would like to address three concerns that have been expressed by those who oppose this proposal. The first being that sufficient town review exists without P and Z oversight. Secondly, that the proposed change would prevent the development of affordable housing. And thirdly, that the proposed change would be used to block lot splits entirely. As has been noted, some have argued that sufficient review exists without planning and zoning oversight of the free cuts. However, it is not the comprehensive review provided by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Broadly speaking, the Building Department is reviewing applications to ensure that the structures are meeting safety codes. The Health Department is looking to ensure that there is sufficient land for septic system. These departments are not considering whether or not important natural features of the landscape are being preserved, whether driving locations have optimal sightlines, whether unique characteristics such as horse trails or archaeological finds are being preserved. And beyond that, these reviews do not allow any kind of public input or public hearing. The examples of problems that result from lot splits and the absence of P and Z oversight are well documented in the background materials and staff memo prepared by the Commission of January the 21st. Others have argued that the proposal will prevent the development of affordable housing. This argument raised serious concerns for the League of Women Voters because we have long been proponents for the development of housing for those of moderate and low income. As many of you are aware, affordable housing units under state statute have income, purchase, and rental limits and require a restriction on the land records as a guarantee that housing remains affordable over time despite market pressures. It is important for RTM members to know, therefore, that none of the lot split developments have restricted their housing as affordable and instead developers have built market-rate homes. For example, the case of the two units constructed on Elmira Drive, they sold for $515,000 and $524,000 respectively for units that are sitting on 2,500-plus or minus square feet of land. Another lot split at 132 Henry Street created a sale of $660,000. Whereas, according to the Housing Authority, an affordable deed-restricted unit for a family of four would be in the $250,000 to $290,000 range. So based upon these facts, the League believes that the concern that this proposal will thwart affordable housing is unfounded. The League would also like to address the argument that the Planning and Zoning Commission may use the 15% set-aside requirement to block lot splits entirely. Again, based upon the facts, this concern appears unfounded. In the P and Z background documents which you received dated 1/25/05, they present a track record in relation to six two-lot subdivisions and nine two-lot re-subdivisions. The Commission approved all of these development proposals and there is no indication that the set-aside requirement rendered the subdivision undevelopable. As the P and Z documents point out, free-cut developments have created numerous problems such as the clearcutting of lots, neighborhood flooding, and the loss of open space. It is recognized that much of the remaining undeveloped or underdeveloped lots in town are on marginal land containing wetlands, steep slopes, and ledge. These parcels are being heavily engineered in order to develop them, blasting of ledge, bringing in major amounts of fill and significant amounts of cutting and filling of the land. As we continue to develop this marginal land, the margin for error shrinks. And each of us bears the cumulative costs of these mistakes along the way. In closing, the League supports the proposed change because it provides for consistency in definition so that all land that is subdivided will be comprehensively reviewed, promotes the coordination and review of the approval process among all town land use agencies, and helps to minimize development impacts of approved development projects. We urge the members of the RTM to concur with the Land Use and Legislative and Rules Committee and vote yes on this proposal. Thank you.
Franklin Blumer, to be followed by Alan Small.
As I mentioned in giving the committee report to the Land Use Committee, I missed those meetings and wanted to take the opportunity to speak a little bit on this item. The building zone regulations exist for a reason. They exist to promote the orderly development of the town in accordance with the Plan of Conservation and Development. I think that the building zone regulations should apply uniformly to all types of subdivisions and that this exception, this anomaly, that two-lot subdivisions do not have to follow the same rules as other subdivisions is just wrong. Whether Mr. Labine is right or not about how this two-lots free split came to exist because land was cheap back in those days, the need for the two-lot subdivisions to be brought within the ambit of the building zone regulations today because of the high value of land is certainly true. And I agree with him on that point. Mr. Labine described some of the requirements to you, the need to file detailed subdivision plans, layouts and so on, engineering and plans must be shown. A report from the Department of Health regarding sewage disposal is also required. But perhaps most important is the fact that all of these reports and plans that are submitted in connection with a subdivision go on file at the Planning and Zoning Commission and they are then available for public inspection. Adjoining neighbors need to be notified and the entire process, the entire subdivision is then reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public meeting where neighbors can bring their views to bear on it. I think this is a very important control. I see no reason why two-lot subdivisions are any less needful of this type of inspection, this openness. And I believe that the time with high values of land that exist today, the time has come to close this loophole, as it truly is. Thank you.
Alan Small, to be followed by Richard Hollerin.
Thank you very much, members of the RTM. In looking at this lot's proposal, I looked at this to determine if there may be a way that similar things could be achieved without this being a charter change. I take a charter change very seriously and it seemed that most of the problems described in the presentations that I heard were related to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I went back to the statutes that were adopted in 1970 by the Planning and Zoning Commission that adopted the three-lot subdivision as the basis for how they define subdivisions. And at the bottom of that section, 818, I found a sentence that was very interesting that stated, "There is no authority for the Commission to adopt as a regulation definition of subdivision which modifies, restricts, or enlarges upon the statutory definition." Planning and zoning adopted this section, states they have no authority to change the definition once they adopt it. So I wanted to determine if that was presented to our Legislative and Rules when they voted on this resolution. I tried to get a hold of Doug Wells, Vice Chair of the Legislative and Rules Committee, and was not able to get a hold of them. They were out of town. So at that point, I thought, well, maybe some of these things within the home rule system will allow us to write our own regulation. And so I looked further into Section 99 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which states specifically that home rules, so far as it relates to charter changes, may be exercised only in accordance with the general statutes. So that brought me back to the general statutes, which stated that there's no authority for the Commission to adopt a different definition. So I don't believe that this resolution is in a condition for approval. And at the appropriate time, I would like to make a motion for this to be postponed so that we can determine the correct legal status of this. And further, I also found that in making any zoning amendment or zoning change in a regulation, planning and zoning is supposed to make a finding of whether or not the change is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. And we've heard how this has been going on for six or 10 years or so. It's been a huge problem, although they're only able to find four different examples to put in the examples. But there is nothing that I could find in the Plan of Conservation, you know, that could have been updated very easily at some of these update meetings to take into account something that is very serious and be in a charter change. I think that this should specifically be in the Plan of Conservation Development. It specifically isn't.
If you were asking a question, a motion to postpone would be appropriate at any time.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until the next meeting.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to postpone Item Five to our April meeting. That motion is now before us and that motion is debatable. Discussion on Mr. Small's motion to postpone. You've explained your rationale for it. Further discussion. Mr. Tuthill, District -- no? Mr. DeCaro, District 12.
Mr. Moderator, I would second the motion before us and I would say that there are a series of unanswered questions here, many of which were put to the representative from the Planning and Zoning Commission in my district. If we vote tonight, we really do not understand the magnitude of the change that is being put forth. Of the 95 free-cut applications, we don't know exactly how many of them were of the type of egregious examples put forth in the document, which consisted of five. We don't really know how many people are affected. I hear 11,75. I hear 9,000. Certainly, if we're taking away what is currently considered an absolute right from 9,000 people, we need to know that. Now, we asked at our district meeting if the town attorney had issued an opinion and we were told that, yes, but it was subject to attorney-client privilege. This was told to us by the client. And we asked the client if they would release it and the client, being the Planning and Zoning Commission, said, "No, we're not going to release the opinion." I found the same sections of the charter that Mr. Small quoted to you. It was also asked at our district meeting, what would be the cost related to defend the charter change in court? There's no answer. We asked how many towns have this definition which conflicts with the state statutes. We don't know the answer to that either. We only know Stamford. I called the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities today and I asked them what it would take to do a survey. They said they could have it done within seven to 10 days. Finally, we talk about the 15% set-aside and we asked in our district, how many subdivisions which were approved didn't have the 15% set-aside? We don't have an answer to that either. I was hoping some of those would be answered tonight, but I haven't seen the answers forthcoming and I personally am not willing to take away the rights of a series of property owners in this town until some of these questions are answered.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Harry Labine, Chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission.
The legality of this, the necessity of being certain, reasonably certain, that it will survive court challenge was an obvious thing. It looked at before we even began this process. We consulted with the town attorney and the town attorney can speak for himself, but the bottom line is, in his view, this thing is legal, it will survive court challenge, and therefore, any concern of that nature is not appropriate. With respect to not releasing the town attorney's opinion, the idea that this RTM would debate a legal opinion in this validity and whether the case cited is correct or whatever is rather absurd. The town attorney is quite clear on this and I'll ask John, perhaps, to make a comment. I will have, ask, respond to one thing that the prior speaker mentioned, that is the number of so-called egregious examples of what has happened. From January 1, 2000 through today, there have been 88 free cuts allowed. Twenty-six, or about 30% of these free cuts resulted in lots which required variances of one kind or another. Twenty-two of those lots, or 25%, were undersized. This loophole is causing undersized lots, which are then being built to the max, they completely escape our subdivision regulations, and they should be, it should be ended. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Mr. Edwards, District Eight, to be followed by Joan Caldwell, District 10.
Thank you. I urge the RTM to postpone the action on this tonight for the questions that have been raised. My biggest concern was, on the one hand, it's to the credit of the P and Z that they had set up a public hearing on the R six specifically and they said, "We will not talk about lot splits that night." We talked at great length about the setbacks and they had given the public the opportunity, at a later date, they said, there'd be a series of hearings to talk about this and invite public opinion. Then the sequence of events was at the selectmen's meeting. This was brought up and it seemed to be coming out of the blue without public notice seemingly. I stand corrected if I'm wrong, but something as serious as was mentioned by Mr. Small, to consider a charter change, quite frankly, without thinking the broader implications, I don't think there's a rush to have to do this. It's of my concern that at least the public's comments should be invited, as was proposed by the Planning and Zoning on lot splits. They specifically excluded it that night during the conversation and they led us to believe that this was going to be a topic of public, of public opportunity to talk about it. The other question which I raise is when we're considering a town charter change, shouldn't there be public hearings that would be open first before we get to this point of having this seemingly sprung on us? Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Joan Caldwell, to be followed by Lloyd Hall.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I cannot believe that you have not had the same experience that I've had and that is old-time residents, new residents coming up to us because we're in government and saying to us, "What's going on in this town? Have you seen the houses? Have you seen the development? Why are they letting this happen? There's confusion, there's concern, and we are all part of it because we're in government." They don't realize that it's planning and zoning. And until this issue came up, I wasn't too certain in my own mind as to what the cause was for this building that I see on Mason Street and elsewhere. Now, it's easy to postpone. I've been in this body for almost 40 years and I can tell you every time something really tough comes before us, there's always a group in the back of the room that says, "Postpone." Well, you've got your proposal, but you also have word from the Planning and Zoning Commission, from the town planner, that this is serious and we've got to deal with it and there's no point in postponing it. It should have been dealt with several years ago. We didn't know, we do know tonight. Thirty-day delay is too much for me. I want to close the door and hope that there's still a few horses left in the barn to save. Please.
Lloyd Hall, to be followed by Chris Von Kaiseling.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lloyd Hall from the 10th District and a former president of the Round Hill Association. This beautiful town of ours, this gem of our country and our town is fantastic. How's it done? It's done through an orderly It's done through an orderly procedure of development. The Round Hill Association was instrumental in the four-acre, two-acre zoning back in 1942. These people on the Planning and Zoning Commission are not talking through their hat. They're coming through logical experience. This is for the benefit of us all. If we're going to open this state and this town to people profiteering by overbuilding, then the beauty of this town is gone forever. This is the beginning of the end. Serious, I'm not trying to be crude or—there's no mistake. This has to be done. And by putting this off is just by worsening the situation and putting the time off when the sort of Damocles will fall, and then it's too late. I urge you not to postpone, and then go ahead and vote in favor of the proposal by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you all very much.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Chris Von Kaiseling, to be followed by Paul Pugliesi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, too, have been involved for many years, not only in the RTM and the Land Use Committee of the previous Planning and Zoning Committee, but also as the vice president for zoning for the Koskow Association for some 15 or some odd years, involved with this. It's plagued us for a long time, so I, too, have been long concerned about this issue. It seems to me that, on the question of postponement, there are two issues in front of us, two questions raised. One was, is this suggestion in proper order? Is it legally—are we legally able to adopt this tonight, and will that stand? Or is this going to be a frivolous motion on our part because we can't do as—the question was raised, perhaps we can't do what's being suggested? That's simple enough to solve. We have our town's attorney here. We've had the responses from our leadership on record. The second question that was raised was the effect of these lot splits. Has it been demonstrated to us appropriately and thoroughly that this action that's being put before us is necessary? And if it is necessary and there's a cost to it, is it worth the cost that it may cause to some individuals? I suggest that the four and five examples that are put before you are just that. They're here for examples of many, many, many other situations you see. Obviously, in our explanos, we've, being fiscally conservative, we're not like 30 pages or 20, you know, 400 pages in our call, but they've been there. I've seen them. I would suggest that many of the speakers that I'm sure we have lined up for tonight will give you plenty of anecdotal examples of what they've had in their own neighborhoods, in their own next-door neighbors, and from their experience. So there's no question that we will be able to see by the end of the evening that this is a problem that needs to be addressed. I can certainly tell you that it's been one that's been before anybody interested in zoning for at least 20 years. So I would think that it would be somewhat ironic that if we closed this discussion tonight and said, "Well, you haven't had a proper meetings, we haven't had proper public hearings," the effect of postponing this tonight would be stop the meeting right here. The issue would be closed right now, and we would not hear from the 20 or 30 or 40 people that may be here that want to speak about it and give us the information that's being asked for, that very public hearing. So I would suggest that we listen to these people tonight. We'd not postpone this. We'd listen to these people tonight. If at the end of the speeches and the people's contribution, you still find that there's a problem that needs postponement, I'm sure that the issue can be raised again by another person, but I would suggest that we go to the end of this discussion before we move to postpone. Thank you.
Good evening. One moment, please. Just so everyone is aware, there was a list that had approximately 17 names on it. We've now heard from everybody on that list, whether on the main motion or on this motion to postpone, except for six people. Mr. Pugliesi, to be followed by Mr. Holleran.
Evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I would move that this issue be postponed for a number of reasons. One is that there are still many unanswered questions. The suggestion that there are 9,500 out of 15,000 lots that could possibly be split is just inaccurate and unbelievable. I just can't imagine how that number was even achieved. Of these oversized lots that are being mentioned, many would have to go through re-subdivision anyway. Many have no chance of getting approved because they're grossly undersized, camp proof hardship, are heavily impacted by wetlands, or have access problems. One thing you really need to know is, what are the real numbers? How many people really are affected by this? By the way, I have no lots that I think are capable of being split, so I'm not here as an aggrieved homeowner. Has there been a resolution with the conflict of the state statutes? Has there been an economic impact analysis regarding the loss of value to property owners and the corresponding loss of tax revenue if the lots are determined to have been devalued by the inability to split them? If P&amp;Z is only going to impose reasonable subdivision standards, then the 15 percent set aside should be eliminated from this proposal, and two-lot subdivisions should not be required to provide 15 percent set aside. Otherwise, those 1,175 double-sized lots will become undersized lots if they have to set aside 15 percent. If P&amp;Z wants to stop the creation of undersized lots, the Board of Appeals is really the focus because the Planning and Zoning Commission cannot legally approve an undersized lot. If I go in with my lot split and I'm proposing two undersized lots, P&amp;Z has no choice but to deny my application, which would then force me to go to the Board of Appeals and not only to get a variance, but also appeal the denial by planning and zoning. So I end up at the Board of Appeals anyway. I think that maybe that should be the focus of this discussion. There's nothing wrong with reasonable and sensible land use controls, and I think that we need to have that for orderly development. My question is whether or not we're going about it the right way. I've been through the process, and I know that it's anything but easy, and it's anything but out of control. Mrs. Fox has spoken about how you apply for a permit and you need to have an engineering letter. Well, it's not only an engineering letter. The engineer—
Mr. Pugliesi, I just want to remind you and any other speakers, the issue before us right now is, should we vote on this proposed amendment tonight or at our April meeting?
Thank you. I'll save my comments for further discussion, but I think that there are still so many unanswered questions that before we make a charter change, we really need to understand the full impact on taxpayers, not just the developers. I've been called a developer, sometimes worse, but I'm also a taxpayer, a homeowner, a volunteer, and I've lived here all my life. The last thing I want to see is for the town to be overdeveloped in a way that devalues any of our properties. On the other hand, I'm in favor of property rights, and I think that before we impose this kind of a regulation that could have a negative impact on our fellow property owners, we need to examine it carefully. Thank you.
Other speakers interested in addressing the motion to postpone? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, Richard Holleran, District—
To be followed by the gentleman—was that Mr. Carls? No. Gentleman back there. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Richard Holleran, District 1. I would agree with those among us who say that it is not the right time for this motion. The time should have been four years ago or 40 years ago. I purchased my house on Milbank Avenue in 1982, thinking it was the most decrepit house on the street. A demolition permit had already been issued for it. I've spent the last years repairing that house, changing a very inappropriate porch to one which I think is appropriate, and I wanted it to enhance the existing marvelous streetscape that was Milbank Avenue. We have had, in the last two, three years, we've had already eight demolitions on that street, and one new demolition has already been noticed. A very lovely part of our town has been desecrated. I don't think we need to postpone anything like this any further. The horses are out of the barn, but maybe there's a few horses still left. Thank you.
Point of information to prove you to Mr. Wetmore, there seems to be some confusion. Is this item in legal order?
I believe he answered, "It is." Yes. Yes, sir. Others interested in speaking on the motion to postpone? Okay. Mr. Daudakis to follow the speaker.
Todd Ladon, District 8. I'm happy to say that in 1970, I was too young to have been on the RTM, but possibly had Joan Caldwell and the rest of the esteemed members of the RTM in 1970 given some more thought to passing what they passed in 1970, we wouldn't be here debating it now. So I stand in favor of postponing until the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Daudakis.
Mr. Moderator, I move the previous question.
The motion for the previous question has been moved and seconded. That motion is a motion to cut off debate. It is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. If you want to immediately vote on the pending motion to postpone item five to the April meeting, you should vote in favor of Mr. Daudakis's motion for the previous question. If you want to hear further debate on this motion to postpone, you should vote against it. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Yay.
That motion has carried. I will initially—
I don't think that vote was clear when you identified what we were voting on. I think there was—
Okay. That was a motion—we were voting on the motion to cut off debate.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Okay? Which we have now done. So we are now going to vote on Mr. Small's motion to postpone item five to our April meeting, which is four weeks away, and the call for that meeting closes this Friday. I will initially call for a voice vote. This is a procedural motion. If you are in favor of postponing item five to April, you should vote in favor of the motion to postpone. If you want to continue discussion and vote on item five tonight, you should vote against this motion to postpone. So we are voting on the motion to postpone. Mr. Burke, you have a question?
Point of order, Mr. Burke, could you remind people that are not members of the RTM that they should not participate in the voice vote, please?
Okay. Mr. Burke has reminded those not members of the RTM that they may not participate in the voice vote. All those in favor of Mr. Small's motion to postpone item five to the April meeting, please signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has failed. All right. Item five is before us. Further discussion on item five. Now, there were several people who spoke on the motion to postpone, but there are some I have not yet called on. And by the way, those who spoke on the motion to postpone, who had not already spoken on the main motion, are entitled to be heard if they still want to. For example, Mr. Pugliesi, I know—I tried to remind you, but, you know, you would have the right if you wanted to come back. All right. I will continue calling from the list on those we have not yet heard from, and if others want to speak, again, you have that right if we do not cut off debate before then. So, Sabine Schoenberg, District 11, to be followed by Ben Wallace, District 10.
I would like to speak against this change of the amendments. I am very concerned that we're using a charter change, which to me is a very heavy-handed approach to changing amendments when, in fact, we're talking about 1,175 or thereabouts number of properties involved, over 15,300 approximately. That is a small percentage. That is 78 percent of the overall number, first of all. Secondly, I think it should be pointed out that whether you are for or against these changes, at the end of the day, very little is going to change effectively. The only thing that's going to change is everybody is going to have to dole out a hell of a lot more money to flow through the process. We're talking about taking rights away of homeowners who have owned these properties, who've paid taxes on these properties, and we are now saying, "No, wait a minute, you can no longer do this. You now have to go through this process." And make no mistake about it, it is a very expensive process. You are asked to produce architectural drawings, bring in engineers, hire attorneys, provide an archaeological assessment. This is not thousands of dollars. This is tens of thousands of dollars, and all the people I have asked talk about $50,000 and up. So particularly regarding the smaller zones, this is a serious amount of change, and I think we should think very carefully whether we want to levy that on people. Here's the net effect. People are going to come before planning and zoning with all their engineers surrounding them, all their studies done, having spent oodles of money and time to get to that point. If they are in the 1,175 properties that under today's regulations might qualify, they will no longer qualify because they do not have the 15 percent additional needed. That means they will be turned down, declined by planning and zoning, and will now proceed on to the ZBA. They will claim, make the claims, claim hardship cases, whatever they can produce right there, and that's all. Their claim is to ZBA ultimately, after having spent quite a bit of money. Other people who may actually have the additional 15 percent will make their same proposal, suspend their monies to planning and zoning, only to then also find out that it is fairly unpredictable, even if they have the additional 15 percent, whether or not they get disapproved. Because under Section 6-297, I read with interest, that the Planning and Zoning Commission then still reserves the right to evaluate the quality of the open space, i.e., they, in our explanos we find on page 15, I quote, "shall be of suitable size, location, topography, and general character, and shall have adequate road access, et cetera, as is deemed proper by the commission." So even those people might be turned down because the flavor of the day is not what they have. Again, their only resource and option will be to go to ZBA, after having spent a lot of money, thinking that they, again, have the additional open space set aside. So no matter what happens, everybody's going to wind up in front of ZBA, and unless we hear from ZBA and get a clarification in terms of what is actually acceptable, we're all wasting our times, and we're asking our constituents to dole out a lot more money to get there. That is the net effect. That is the only quantifiable change from anything that we're discussing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace, to be followed by Nino Setchi, if he is—
My name is Ben Wallace from District 10, and I favor the motion to change—to abolish this two-lot split loophole. And I think Mr. Labine, Ms. Stone, and everyone else that's spoken on behalf of our proposal have been very, very clear and very effective. There have been several hearings. I've attended all of them, and everyone has had a chance to speak. I'm sorry that some people didn't find out about it, but I'm just a citizen, and I found out about it. Rather than go about the points, I would like to speak from anecdotal experience. My experience in this has been in the last year—I knew nothing about it before this last year—but I was a member of a neighborhood group that was trying to prevent the overdevelopment of a wildlife habitat that drains off into the Audubon Wildlife Sanctuary. We fought through all the commissions and all the agencies, the Wetlands Agency— We fought through all the commissions and all the agencies. The Wetlands Agency voted to deny this development for environmental reasons. The chairman, the director of the Conservation Commission spoke eloquently in front of planning and zoning, suggesting that they deny this application on environmental reasons. None of us had a dime to make on this. The developer, the owner of the property, never lived in our neighborhood, was not a, had never contributed a moment of his life to our neighborhood. It was all just to exploit and make money. Now, I'm speaking on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission's proposal, and we lost because of the two-lot split. I've seen these lawyers and these advocates, these developers, come in and sneer at the agents, tell them what they're, at the commissioners, tell them what they're going to do. I was appalled at the way that they were being treated. Now, this is a situation, this is a hemorrhage. We need to do something about it, and we need to do something tonight. These commissioners, the agents on the Wildlife Agency, how much are we spending on them? They're donating their time, folks. Have you seen the number of hours that our commissioners and our agents spend on these items? They need nothing but our support and our applause for the work that they're doing. Thank you.[792.31][792.31](APPLAUSE). Now, we have to give these folks the tools to protect our community, and we have to do it tonight. The longer we wait, the more time these people are going to have to put in, the more and more of these two-lot split applications, get through these loopholes, make more money, rate more of our property, and upset our community. I urge you strongly with all my heart to give these people the support they need. If you don't think this is enough, and I don't think it's enough either, let's move to the next step and do the next thing, and the next thing after that, to make this, make this good, and give these public servants the support that they need. Thank you so much.[834.00][834.00](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Sechi, to be followed by Mr. Puleo.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. My name is Nino Sechi. I live on 17 Melrose Avenue in the Chickahominy section of this great town we have. I would like to speak briefly in full support of a change in the town charter, which would grant the Planning and Zoning Commission authorization to review all of the split lot applications in R6 zones. I had heard of lot splits several years ago, but truthfully, gave it very little thought, figuring it was simply a request to divide a piece of property, to develop it, so long as it complied with zoning requirements in that particular area. I learned very quickly that there was more to that premise, after neighbors three doors away from me decided they would seek to divide their 10,000-square-foot parcel, keeping the piece with the single-family home, and selling the remaining 5,000-square-foot vacant lot. They followed proper procedures, applying for a lot split in this R6 zone, where minimum square footage was 7,500 square feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the application, determined it was not a subdivision request, and that it did not fall under its umbrella of responsibility. So the request was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Although I protested the appeals, to the appeals board, mostly with regard to off-street parking and traffic congestion, the request was approved by the committee, and then the fun began. Melrose Avenue, if you're not familiar with it, is an 18-foot-wide road coming up, up a hill from the Post Road, that travels about 400 feet in to Arctic Street. There's barely room enough to squeeze two cars side by side, entering or leaving the road. Except for a moderate-sized office building, there are eight residences, mostly one family. There are no buildable lots on the street, but this one was created by the split lot arrangement, although it was one-third smaller than the minimum requirement of 7,500 square feet. That split created two lots, each 2,500 square feet less than the minimum 7,500 square feet. The vacant lot was sold to a developer for approximately $275,000. We turned around and erected a one-family home with side yard measuring eight feet, four inches from a neighbor's home, which happens to be my son and my wife's home. They can look through their kitchen window into the new home, eight feet away. I'll show you how far that is. This, this young lady here, eight feet, would bring you to this. That's eight feet, approximately, the distance between the two homes. They can look through their kitchen window into the new home, eight feet away, with slim to no chance of placing a ladder on that side to repair or even paint the side of the house. Variances were granted by the appeals board for front measurement, front yard setback, lot shape, total area, thereby squeezing the building into the lot. As the two-story modular home was being erected, more excavation was taking place. In another corner of the lot, a two-car garage was being built onto the same 5,000 square feet. The developer had obtained a separate permit for a garage with storage space above. The house sold several months after completion for an amount in excess of $100, $800,000, not a bad return on a $275,000 investment. How did this arrangement affect our neighborhood? It removed open space between two property owners, created an overcrowded condition by jamming a home between two neighbors, one to the right and one to the rear of the new home. It intensified runoff water problems on Melrose Avenue, depositing rain and melting snow on that roadway in front of three residences, and exacerbated a traffic problem that already existed there. Although it's now too late for Melrose Avenue, I feel that granting the Planning and Zoning Commission authorization to review lot split applications is appropriate, and will prevent the type of overdevelopment that now exists on Melrose Avenue. It will also control the type of overcrowding in other R6 areas that exist in Chickahominy, Pemberwick, Glenville, Cos Cob, and Central Greenwich. Thank you.[1140.33][1140.33](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Puleo, to be followed by Roger Laurie.
Both sides of the debate have covered a lot of the issues tonight. What I'm going to say is probably somewhat redundant, but I'm going to say it anyhow, so sorry. One of the primary things that I think has come out of this is that what we lack from the Planning and Zoning Commission is any sort of true quantifiable evidence that any of their regulations at all, not just this particular regulation, but their entire subdivision regulation, or anything in general, has anything, has a real effect that is not financially burdensome to the property owners that they're affecting. I don't, you know, you can sit here and go up and say, "Well, look, I saw this thing, and I saw that thing, and I remember this other thing," and da-da-da-da, on and on. But, you know, until you can come up and present a real research document at any time, you know, I'd like to see something in the history of this. And it's not necessarily particular to this Planning and Zoning Commission. It's true in general throughout the United States in terms of planning and zoning, that everybody goes kind of from the seat of their pants, this is what they saw their neighbor happen to, and let's implement this regulation, and then we'll just see what happens. Well, I'd like to, for once, see some sort of real numbers that's going to show me, you know, what is the cost of this, and what is the benefit that we as a town are going to get out of it, other than potentially keeping eight feet out of, you know, somebody's back window. It also becomes pretty clear that the real issue here is the appeals board versus the Planning and Zoning Commission. The appeals board seems to be able to sign off on, well, just about any variance that homeowners want. Personally, I'm kind of for that, but that's a separate issue. If you really want to address this, and there was a speaker earlier that talked about this, the net effect of this is going to be, all sorts of regulations get in place, and then it gets in front of the appeals board, and they grant variance, and that's it. So we spend all sorts of money upfront to have all this stuff done, and then they write a variance off. So if you're going to attack the problem, address it directly. Don't skirt around it by implementing a charter change that's going to, you know, it's the sledgehammer hitting the peanut. Let's make this big change and not address the real problem we're trying to address. One other quick point I'll make is that there's talk about how the housing prices have gone through the roof here. Well, that shouldn't be a surprise, considering the planning and zoning regulations that keep you from building anything. You have a simple supply and demand issue in the town of Greenwich, and there is no supply of houses, and a huge amount of demand because it's very desirable. That's going to drive the housing prices up, and no amount of regulations are going to affect that. So you're stuck with that as a town, and that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but that's, you know, it's just simple economic supply and demand. There was a couple of speaks that talked about different associations in town and how they developed it. That's probably the best model. You're talking about private landowners who buy into an association, they buy into those regulations, they get a direct vote in that, it's a controlled, it's a controlled environment. It's a model that's taken, taken over a lot of the country. If you go out west or down south, you'll see a lot of private communities where the, where the members of the communities buy into the concept of that community, and that gives you a lot more diversity. And what we're seeing here is just, you know, the town implementing what they want to do. Finally, I'll take the point of the free cut. There's nothing in the regulations that call it a free cut. It's called a free cut, you know why? Because it is free. It avoids all this regulatory burden, this complete, all the different checkpoints that have to go through that aren't necessarily beneficial, because nobody's been able to give us any numbers that really say they're beneficial. I've been saying, "Well, yeah, you know, I saw five out of the 86 properties, and they stunk, but I can't go through and give you an actual number of those, even those 86 that said, well, these, you know, 45 of those were really bad, and I'm just showing you the five most egregious, and I'll give you references to all the rest." We don't have references to all the rest. We have five. That's great. So I'm clearly in support of shooting down this amendment. I know that a lot of people aren't, but, you know, take it for what it's worth. Thank you.[1420.01][1420.01](APPLAUSE).
I did call on Mr. Laurie, and I have a feeling I don't need to call on anyone else. Mr. Laurie?
I moved the question.
Second. Mr. Laurie has moved the previous question that has been seconded. Once again, that is a motion to cut off debate. If we, if we adopt that motion for the previous question, we will immediately proceed to vote on item five. If there is not a two-thirds majority to approve it, we will continue discussion on item five. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. Now, I'm going to ask the district chairs to poll their delegations, but I want to remind everyone there, I am going to call on Elizabeth Campbell of District Five, who has indicated an intention to offer a sense of the meeting resolution tonight. So we are not yet finished, based on that notice to me. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number five, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, I will call on Elizabeth Campbell, District Five.[1496.76][1496.76](LAUGHTER). This is for the purpose of offering a sense of the meeting resolution on a non-agenda item.
Oh, good evening.
Now, let me, I'd ask the district chairs to please conduct the polling quietly, and I ask all members to give attention to our speaker, Ms. Campbell.
This is simply a sense of the meeting resolution. Shall I read this, Tom?
Yes.
All right. This is a sense of the meeting resolution that relating to our vote on the dear cull, item number seven, excuse me, number 11, at our December 13 meeting, there should have been, prior to this vote, more information provided, as well as a longer period of time during which the subject could have been evaluated by the entire community. Furthermore, before the town schedules and appropriates funds for any future culling, there should be inclusive discussion and evaluation of the subject available to all residents.
All right. Has this been circulated among, is everyone familiar with this? All right. I will, I will just read this again. This is what is being offered as a sense of the meeting resolution. Now, once again, we cannot take this up unless we first vote by a two-thirds majority of those present and voting to do so. This is the text of the proposed resolution. This is a sense of the meeting resolution that relating to our vote on the dear cull, item number 11, at our December 13, 2004 meeting, there should have been, prior to this vote, more information provided, as well as a longer period of time during which the subject could have been evaluated by the entire community. Furthermore, before the town schedules and appropriates funds for any future culling, there should be inclusive discussion and evaluation of the subject available to all residents. Is there a motion to take this up?
No.
Okay. And it has been seconded. Okay. It has been moved and seconded to take this item, which is a non-agenda item, up tonight, which we can do, this being a regular meeting of the representative town meeting, but we are required by state law to first vote by a two-thirds majority vote to do so. So I will initially call for a voice vote.
Yes.
No. I think we need a record vote on this. Will the district, all right. I am going to ask the district chairs to mark your voting cards. Do we have voting cards?
Yes.
Okay. To mark your voting cards, proposed sense of the meeting resolution, motion to take up, proposed sense of the meeting resolution. We are not voting on the resolution. This vote is merely, should we take it up and discuss it, and then act on it? This is not a vote on the resolution, but merely, should we essentially add it to our agenda? Are we clear? All right. Will the district chairs please poll your delegation on that issue? We will need to adjourn, I'm sorry, recess the meeting while that vote is being conducted, and when we have the results, we can continue. I have the results of the vote on item number five, which is the proposed amendments to the zoning regulations. Those in favor, 126; opposed, 26; abstaining, 7. That item has carried.[1751.51][1751.51](APPLAUSE). I have the results on the vote, whether to take up the proposed sense of the meeting resolution on the dear cull issue. Those in favor, 39; opposed, 115; abstaining, 0. That motion has failed. There being no further business to come before the meeting and absent objection, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and have a safe trip home.
Thank you. You sound like a priest in church, you know, safety in the cross.